Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call?
Gerald Trueheart.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Jeanne Bowie absent. Addie Daniels Lane.
Present.
Amen.
Austin Edwards.
Present.
Yolanda Lopez.
Present.
Sasa Matanya.
Here.
Larry Trailer.
Present.
Jeannie Weakland.
Present.
We have a question.
Amen. Sunshine Law, the New Jersey Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests as discussed or acted on, is discussed or acted on. On the rules of this act, the Trenton Publication has caused notice of this meeting. Be publicized the date, time, and place, therefore posted in the webpage, The Times, and The Star-Ledger. Formal action will take place at this meeting. Our mission statement, all students will graduate with a vision for their future and motivate to learn continually and prepare to succeed in their choice of college or career. We have an adoption of the agenda. We do have, one notice we want to make is that our regular agenda was revised to include a first reading of our policies that are on our agenda. I believe it's 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 series policies as a first reading for tonight's board meeting. We will now move on to our, need a motion to approve as announced in a minute for the minute, for the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move the second it, roll call.
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Bowie absent. Addie Daniels Lane.
Yes.
Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Sasa Matanya.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Probably have our superintendent's remarks. Hey, alright.
I think this is working, testing. Hi, hi everyone, welcome on this chilly spring, pre-spring day, so it's about to get warm soon. I don't know about you, but I spent two days just outside getting sun and fresh air this weekend, cold or not, so just to get out of the house. So excited about the spring, and I know you are also. Tonight, we are delighted to hear a performance from Kilmer Choir comprised of students from the 4th, 5th, and I think the 6th grades. The choir is directed by Kilmer General Music Teacher, Ms. Lindita Lolé. Also joining us tonight, I think I see Ms. Zwirzinski, is she here this evening? Who is our Trenton Public School Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts. And none other than the principal, Mrs. Paula Batea. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Tonight, the choir will sing "Black Butterfly." "Black Butterfly" is a song written by the songwriting duo Barry Mann and Cynthia Wheel in 1982, and most famously recorded by American recording artist Denise Williams. Williams' recording was released in 1984 for Columbia Records and is on her 1984 album, Let's Hear It For The Boy. The B-side of the single is the song Blind Dating, also featured on the album. Butterflies are widely recognized as symbols of transformation, rebirth, and change due to their life cycle of metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly. They can also represent hope and recovery, a sign of warmer days and new beginnings in the spring. Endurance, a testament of hope and perseverance, having started as a vulnerable egg. Freedom and joy, a reminder to embrace liberation and let go of burdens. Ladies and gentlemen, we bring you the choir from Kilmer and "Black Butterfly."
Evening ladies and gentlemen. "Black Butterfly" was written by the songwriting duo Barry Mann and Cynthia Wheel in 1982, and is the most famously, and is the most famously recorded American recording by artist Denise Williams. Black butterflies are symbols of transformation that represent cycle of life, death, and rebirth. Williams' recording was released in 1984 for Columbia Records, and it's on the Herod boy. Let's hear it for the single. For the single boy. Butterflies are widely recognized as symbols of transformation, rebirth, and change due to their life cycle of metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly. They can also represent hope and recovery, a sign of warmer days in spring. Endurance, a testament to hope and perseverance, having started as a vulnerable egg. Freedom and joy, a reminder to embrace liberations and let go of burdens. Ladies and gentlemen, we bring you "Black Butterfly."
Thank you, am I on? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, for those of you left in auditorium, give them one more round of applause. I was lucky to come in during rehearsal, and I was lucky to come in during rehearsal, and I passed by about 10 or 15 of the students, and I gave high fives to the all of them. And somewhere around 16, 17, and 18, I said, wow, you all sound good, can I sing with you? And I was told, no. Now I understand why, they were outstanding, and I would have, I wouldn't have done them, I wouldn't have done them any good together, so. Just the last few comments on superintendent's remarks. I know in the last board meeting, we spoke about immigration concerns and issues. We want our families to know that we have stayed vigilant on that issue for the time that we stopped talking at the mic to every day since trying to find the right message, the right information to share with our families. And we will continue to do so as we go forward. What we do know is at this time, no Trenton Public School and no school around us has had to deal with issues in the school. What I can't do is guarantee anything, but we don't anticipate that. In my conversations with officials that I'm able to have a connection with, it's been shared that that's, that schools and are not the target. I think when immigration officials arrive, they have specific issues that they need to address, if they need to deal with someone in the school, and we hope to have that information prior to. So we want our families to know that children remain as safe as we can keep them in school every day. And we know that's our charge, even in the middle of education, we want to turn your babies home safe to you. And so we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity, and that concludes my remarks.
Alright Superintendent. God bless you, we now have, I believe now we'll work to our comments by board committee chairs. I'll go in this order, I'll go policy, operations. Mr. Bowie is absent tonight, so we'll skip operations, let's see if representative can share from that committee. Teaching and learning, HR, facilities, and then face school support. So we'll start off with facilities. Denise.
Well, policy or facilities?
Policy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I meant to say policy, policy, thank you for correction.
Alright, thank you. So the policy committee met to review policies for the 5,000, 6,000, and 7,000 series. Those policies are up for first reading tonight. As President Trueheart mentioned, we are going to present for second reading the 3,000 and 4,000 series policies for March, our March Board Meeting along with bylaws 0115. And I just wanted to thank everyone who is part of this committee reviewing these policies. It does take time, so I just want to thank everyone who's part of that process, and just know that it is an ongoing process. So just know that as we finish up these last few series, I think we might have one or two more series that we have to review. We still have to continue to update policies that we haven't looked at yet. So just know that we're, this process is continuing, and I just want to thank everyone for all of the effort that they're putting in to review these policies, so thank you.
Can speak to the operations? No? Okay, so we'll pass operations. Teaching and learning? Addie Daniels Lane, Ms. Lane?
Okay, so, good evening, I am reporting on behalf of the Teaching and Learning Committee that met on February the 18th. This report is a very brief report in that during that particular meeting, various proposals, resolutions, and travel requests were discussed and reviewed, and they were approved for submission to the board meeting that was scheduled for tonight. As it relates to special needs students, the discussion regarding special education revolved around changes in the BD program, and these changes related to staffing, some challenges within the program, and student reassignments. Those discussions involved a number of people, including parents, teachers, and families, and in fact, the discussion with those particular folks involved what are the better opportunities to service our students inside and outside of the district. And so that is the report on behalf of the Teaching and Learning Committee, so thank you.
Thank you, on behalf of the HR Committee, I know we met earlier last week. I just want to say that I'm very excited, as always, let me turn this down. Okay, thank you. Excited as always for the opportunities available in the district. I know tonight, we're going to be approving a lot of new hires, I don't know why that's, I gotta turn this down. Be approving a lot of new hires in different positions that are available in the district. And I know weekly, we have our HR team that gives out a lot of information of opportunities that are available in the district. And it's just, it's just a great opportunity and a great chance to come in and really affect the lives of our kids. I know earlier today, alone, I shared out, I think it was about 40 different opportunities that are open right now for people to come in, and you know, literally within, you know, eight hours or so. It's got like 30 shares, right, throughout different platforms on Facebook, and you know, we keep going out and promoting different jobs that are available, so please send this around to your friends, family, and most especially, know that we have something great where you can come in, feed your family off of a great salary, and really give back to our kids and district as a whole, so, thank you.
The facilities committee met on Tuesday, February 18th. Subjects discussed were the old Junior One Building, and the status of the project is, it's currently in progress. The New Jersey Schools Insurance Group has approved the removal of the underground storage tank that they came across. The contractor is currently 85% complete with the demolition, which is in its final stages. The project is scheduled for completion by March of 2025. Reserve capital maintenance projects, the Ziegler Warehouse Building, the contractor has mobilized on site. The asbestos abatement is being conducted by the contractor and has begun and is expected to take about two months. Demolition will begin- Demolition will begin immediately after the abatement. The project is expected to be completed by the summer of 2025. Emergency required maintenance projects. We've got district-wide pest control going on. Facilities has increased school visits and pest control efforts for the winter months. The 2025 fire inspections, inspections have begun and scheduled walk-throughs are currently underway. Right-to-know surveys and chemical disposal, surveys are being distributed to schools and a quote has been obtained for the disposal of chemicals identified for removal from the district. And that's it.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I am reporting out the information for the FACE committee, FACE and school support. So we discussed our parent empowerment series, which is all about how we can support parents when it comes to strategies and skills, especially around managing their children and especially when it comes to attending school. So some of the topics included age-appropriate limit setting when it comes to social media, calming and distressing techniques, and building healthful routines. We also discussed central registration, especially with kindergarten registration, which has opened already for the 2025-2026 school year. We discussed a pop-up grocery event that Union Baptist Church is happening on March 1st, 2025, from 10 to 2:00. And we discussed support services for our students who are dealing with housing insecurity and how we can coordinate with schools and the community around discussing parent rights, especially for some of our undocumented families. And as future conversation, we talked about in our meeting was about school attendance data and some more parent connection engagement events. That was our report. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. On governance, I want to, first of all, want to shout out to Paul, Principal Paul Bathea. What a great job you were doing at Kilmer. I mean, that's doing a great job. Your students are a testimony to the work that you continue to do and your team there. Really appreciate all the work. And I wanted to actually talk to the board about maybe petitioning for a Grammy for your students. They sang that so well. That was phenomenal. And I was actually echoing Superintendent's remarks when he said, I heard him practicing. But I didn't ask if I could join him though. I knew my voice wasn't going to carry, right? So great, great job there. And also Stacy Denton, I see you in National Trio Month in February. You had a great time on Saturday celebrating the work that you were doing in Trio, Mercer County Community College, and of course, at our Trenton Central High School and the partnership. We look forward to that continued partnership with you. Again, just want to continue to congratulate you on the work. Congratulations on National Trio Day annual event every February 4th, Saturday in the month of February. So coincide with Black History Month. That's good, right? So I just wanted to make those few comments and thank all the board members for their committee reports. In terms of our governance, we're doing great work, I think, enhancing the work that we continue to do as board members. One of the things that we decided as a committee was business cards for all of our board members. So I want to thank Lori Hopkins and Jane's office. Thank you so much, Jane, and Superintendent for agreeing, and of course, the committee for agreeing to get business cards for all of our board members. Our Superintendent, of course, has his business cards and others. But we thought it was very important that we are able to communicate when we're out in the community with our constituents, with stakeholders, with parents, with students, to have an opportunity to say, if you want to contact me about something, and maybe it's committee that I'm on, all the business cards have not only your name, but the committee that you're responsible for, whether you're chairperson of a committee or a member of a committee, that information is there with the address, of course, and your email address. I believe we have about maybe 20 or 30 cards here, each person. So we thought that was a good way of promoting ourselves when we're out in the community. When people may want to contact us about a particular issue or a challenge that they're having that we can direct them to, to go through, of course, the chain of command and direct them appropriately in the right course of action so they can get their situation and circumstance handled in decency and in order. The other thing that we have is we decided to put together our, we have our committee schedule and our chairperson's appointments done. That is in front of you as well tonight. So you have that information in front of you, keep that with you, close to you, so you know who's responsible for what committees and who's on those committees to contact if you have any questions prior to board meetings. We also, I want to let you know about the annual board meeting calendar. Even though our public calendar goes through June, we actually have a calendar that goes through December for the board, so we can kind of, part of our planning process that the governance committee decided to put forth. So we have that also. I don't think that's necessarily in front of you, but we sent that to you, an email. Jane sent that out about a week or so ago to all of our board members. We continue to work through our schedule for the entire year, January through December now, of course, February. So we're planning to release that information after our March 10th committee meeting, our governance committee meeting, not only to the committee, but also once we finalize things to the entire board, our kind of monthly calendar of events, activities, presentations, board presentations throughout the year through the month of December, so we can have a planning calendar. That was started actually under the leadership of Sasa and also our past board president, Ms. Lopez. So we're continuing that work that they started, and we're very proud of that work that they have started. We will continue in that effort to plan and present that information to the board and of course, to the public. One of the, yes. And Addie. Amen. And Addie, thank you Superintendent. We also, we had an article in Trenton Journal after our previous board meeting. We were around immigration, immigration rights, and of course, immigration, customs and enforcement activities, of course, with the national issue. But as Superintendent stated, in our city, we pretty much believe we have it under control to every extent possible. However, we did pass a policy 5018, our resolution affirming the commitment to educating all children. We also had an article in the Trenton Journal. We had comments from and quotes from Sasa, Sasa, as well as Austin and myself around the very issue. And we all were on the same page, on point with what the board had decided in our resolution and also making sure that we recognize that the Superintendent's leadership of our district and he is the one who's implementing those policies and practices and procedures in our district and doing a great job, I may add. We look to move forward into February, into March with our Superintendent's pre-conference for our Superintendent overall evaluation. So that will start in March. We'll rise our Superintendent and we will have his pre-conference for his evaluation, starting his evaluation process, starting in March, when it gets started early, when it gets done by May. So that process will start in the month of March, so next board meeting. I believe we also have a resolution on the agenda tonight for Howard University. Yeah, Howard, come on, H U. Even though I'm a Morehouse man, but H U, alright. Our Turner Spring Break Program that Austin Edwards presented to the board and two of our committees to our Superintendent. And so we have that on our agenda, looking forward to that collaboration with those students. Mary Ann Friedman was scheduled to be here this evening to present our ethics and our self-evaluation. However, she had some challenges in her family, so she was unable to attend tonight. So we're looking to schedule her for March or April. We're working out, we have to work with Superintendent and the leadership team around when we do that. So we do things logistically and decent in order. So we'll have more information on that discussed in our next governance committee meeting. Want to remind all of our board members to complete their financial disclosure statements that are due now. If you haven't done so, please get that done because that is a part of CUSAC. So to make sure all of our board members are completing their financial disclosure statements. And if you can get that done by end of this week, if you haven't already done so, would appreciate getting that done. We did send also out a student rep letter to the principal of Trenton Central High School, Ms. Courtney, as well as the principal of Capital City High School, Mr. Dana, Dana? Williams, Williams, Williams son, Williams son Dana Williamson. So we're looking forward to hearing back from them about student reps to the board as also a part of our CUSAC, but also a part of our commitment to our students to have them involved with our board and hear their insights and to hear the things that they are interested in and the challenges that they may have and the successes that they're having and the achievements that you're achieving. So we're looking forward to feedback from the principals of our high schools, our two upper-class high schools, the Capital City High School and Trenton Central High School, hopefully in the next, within the next week or so before our next board meeting. We also are, we also have an enhancement to our, we continue to enhance. We also have an enhancement to our board agenda. We now have a table of contents, much like operations has their table of contents. We have a table of contents for our HR. So thank you, thank you Sherrell for that. And of course, Jane Howard, the Superintendent, to putting that together. We'll have one for teaching and learning in March. And the purpose of that is to make it easier for us to find information within, looking at a table of contents, we think is a good idea to have those. It's very helpful in the operations to point out things that you might want to focus on specifically. So we're going to continue to enhance our agenda in those areas. We'll have a table of contents for each section of our agenda moving forward. We also want to limit our addendums. As you see tonight, there's no addendums tonight. So we're working really, really hard to limit the number of addendums that we have as we move forward, of course, at the discretion of our Superintendent. If there's something that is important that needs to be done, needs for us, need for the board approval, we will certainly bring that forth as an addendum on our agenda accordingly to the Superintendent's recommendations to the full board. There's so much going on, I'm going to stop right there. And I'll make some more comments in my time as my board comments, but don't want to continue to belabor, continue, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of things happening, a lot of positive things happening at the board level and in schools. So in my report right there, and I'll give some remarks under my, under the board comment time of our agenda. So we want to move through our agenda now to old business, which are response to public participation from our January 27th, 2025 meeting. Got you. Thank you. We have Ramon Collins of Safe Soil. He was coming here to share with us about soil depletion issues around the city, I believe. Just wanted to make us aware and to encourage us to study that in our school district. So I want to thank Ramon Collins of Safe Soil for his presentation to us and awareness around soil depletion. We had two responses from TEA in terms of our immigration, customs and enforcement challenges here, of course, nationally in our city. Jack Sullivan, social studies teacher, TEA, and John Forte, TEA, just expressed concerns around immigration and negative impact that has on our students. But they reaffirmed our commitment, they heard our commitment in our policy presentations and our resolution, our Superintendent's remarks around immigration work that he is doing with his team and the school district. And they felt very comfortable that we were on top of it and that we were moving forward with our policies and ensuring safe zones and safe schools for all of our students, in particular, our immigrant population, which of course is growing. All of our students, we want to have an education that is free from danger and free from any kind of, you know, stress or turmoil that from the outside that impacts their learning. We had concerns from Talithia Duncan around a couple of issues. One was around our BD program. She also had insights and conversation on immigration, some work, some information for us around HR responsiveness and some things around the issues of parents and HR staff and some communication challenges there. But of course, our Superintendent and his team responded not only to special education concerns, but also to human resources concerns and immigration concerns from our public participation and public comment period. So that concludes our January 27, 2025 board concerns from our January meeting. We now move on to public participation. I believe we have two people tonight, two people tonight. I'm going to read a public comment advisory for everyone before we go into our public comment period. The Trenton Public School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard in any school or school district issue that a member of the public may feel is a concern to the residents of our school district. Each person who signs up to commit to comment will have five minutes. You'll be notified when your five minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it's your time to speak, please address all of your comments to the Board President. Please conduct yourself in respectful and courteous manner for anyone who comments or actions are either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person. We will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. Comments that adhere to these guidelines will not be interrupted. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your five-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the board Superintendent or designee will address your questions to the extent provided by law. We also ask that members of the public not interrupt the speaker during public comment. Our first is Naomi. Naomi Lopez, please come forward, junior class of 2026. Come on, welcome.
You've got to press the button. Someone show her where to press the button. Thank you. Yeah, so the mic can turn on. No, it's on the front. The little person. The little person. There you go.
Do I start? Okay, thank you. Good evening. We come to you tonight as behalf of the Trenton Central High School Student Buddy. Our goal as officers of junior class 2026 is to raise money for our events such as trips and specifically our prom. We've had many successful fundraisers such as bake sales during homecoming and pretzel sales after school. We've had, we've faced a problem that we noticed is that many students no longer carry cash. And we, our goal is to see if there can be a change within that, such as having digital payments. We, throughout our cells, we noticed that a lot of students weren't able to participate in our activities due to not having cash and asking if we could provide them with transactions within like cell, Apple Pay, or Cash App. We proposed that Central High, Trenton Central High School should be allowed to have a cell account that our principal would be running it. And we could provide them with a QR code that none, not us as students or our advisors would not be having access, access to these accounts. Only our principal would have access to it. And within using that QR code, we can show it to the students and the students, nor us, can see what happens within this account. And this would allow you guys to see every movement that it happens within that account and every transaction that happens. And it also secures safety. For example, like there's many issues that could happen with having cash with us, like having threat or loss of the money. But with having this access, you guys would be having, would be more secure and safe for all of us. And we noticed also that in other clubs, such as students helping under us, they also face this issue. And not only will this profit benefit us, but also them and other clubs. We thank you for your time and hope you consider our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your time, great presentation. Thank you for your time, great presentation. Jane. Junie Marti- I see it, Junie Martinez from Tessa, I believe that Judy is here right now, so we will uh move on from our public participation and public comment period. Board member, board member contact, uh con- comments, we'll start with Mr. Trailer.
Uh, I have none, thank you.
Move down, we'll come right down the line here, if anybody has comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
That's right?
Yep.
Um, so probably nobody in this room is as much a news junkie than I am.
What kind of junkie?
News junkie, news junkie, news, news. Um, but I guess this goes directed to all of us here on the days and the superintendent. I am extremely worried about the national panorama and how that is going to affect um New Jersey being a democratic state, but most directly our district. Um, superintendent, thank you for the update on um, you know, the ICE raids and how schools are not a target. And while I believe you, it's hard for me to believe anything on a national level anymore. Um, you know, they're, they're talking about abolishing the Department of Education and as we all know, they fund us directly both for our special education, our children with disabilities. That would be a huge disaster for our district. And I was just wondering, I guess directly superintendent or, or um the president, you know, have there been conversations about this? Um, because I believe them when they say they're going to do this and I'm just extremely worried on how it's going to impact our kids and our teachers, I mean, our district as a whole. I mean, I can't see losing, what do we fund it Jane, ten million? What, how much did they give us? The, 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 how much federal funding do we get? Do you know off the top? About ten million. I mean, that's direct cuts to faculty, students, I mean, it's very frightening. And so I was just wondering if you have any, I mean, they talked about, the other thing that is, is upsetting, the whole D E I discussion. I mean, we are a D E I district. We are primarily students and families of color. And, you know, talking about you cannot teach African-American studies anymore and you cannot, you know, these sort of things. Um, I'm scared and I just wonder what we're going to do. Again, we do have a state that, that will fight for us, but you know, it's, it's a big impact for our district directly. So I was just wondering.
So you're right, there's so many unknowns regarding our future and what the future of education uh federally looks like and then uh what we, how it might impact us in the state. What we do know is that our state partners are uh aware and active in seeking resolutions prior to. I know in this district with you sitting here and with budgeting this year, our team we've sat four hours, all twenty-five location, all eight to ten departments, thinking about streamlining spending, being smart about spending, uh not adding anything, predicting potentially what may come our way. Uh, and we don't know what that number is, you know, like we don't know if it's millions or if it's, you know, small amounts. We did get notice from uh the uh, I want to say the governor's office or a location at the N J D O E, I'm sorry, that um we should be working around three percent potentially in reductions and I have to say this team has been really smart about making sure that uh the people that serve our young people have places to do that, so we feel secure about the coming year. Um, what, what we can't predict is the, the future years and so all we can do is wait and then when that time comes, we want to be smart about what we do and my, you know, my theory and my whole team can tell you, I think it's important to show up and be visible so that if uh things happen and you're not protected, people can say you're working. And so we're going to work hard every day as we have since I've been here to do that. As, as it pertains to D E I, I think that uh it is my opinion as superintendent, as an educational professional, that that term has been hijacked and used as negative. Uh, we don't do D E I work in this district. I know you just said we're a D E I district. We're a district about life. Our people need us, we're going to serve them that way, whether it's through D E I, restorative practices, trauma-informed care, you can tag it any way you want. We serve people and so we don't, we don't want to take a term that's meant so, I mean, it's so positive and so personal to so many people, uh, and allow others to take it and demean the term so that we all run away from it. Uh, we're not running away from anything. This is the work that we do and we don't have a choice whether they take every dime from us or not. And what I've said to our team is what this might force any of us to do, if you've been in these situations, and I would imagine that many of us have, is go back to a day when you didn't have anything. And many of our people grow up that way. I know I was a kid, so I can live in a whole bunch of different spaces because I've been there before, with nothing, with something, with half of something, with half of nothing, sometime in crisis. And so what you do is you operate, uh, and you learn how to do things for uh less, uh, because we're, you know, we've arrived now and we have all these things. Well, you know, this administration, they, I mean, in my opinion, they may not, this, this is not important, what we have, it's more important for this administration to serve our people. I'm talking about us in the room, so, to serve our people, so um, I, I don't have a direct answer to that. Uh, what I think's important is that we show up every day to do the work and however it's tagged it is, and that's what I see from our people. We don't speak about, we worry about it, but we don't speak about this because our, our, the people we serve need us on tap that day.
Right, that work to do, I get it.
Yeah, and so uh, I wish I had an answer, I don't. Uh, what I do know is we're planned as well as we can be for this year and we are actually active in trying to see what it looks like in the future years, not just one, two, three, four, five, six down the road, so.
The other thing I just wanted to speak about, I brought this up at the last meeting, was um cell phones.
Yeah.
And uh, the governor has put out money, I'm sure you know about that, to help districts. So I'm hoping that we will be looking at this, superintendent.
So uh, yes, we absolutely will. What we want to avoid is making uh any decisions about the device itself. Uh, we believe there's an appropriate place for uh technology and certainly cellphone use in a world where students are afraid to walk to school for a lot of reasons now with the addition of those things. So we're going to be mindful as we implement policy. And I was just sharing with someone who asked me about that recently, we'd already talked about a new procedure that would eliminate cell phones in the classroom, but it wouldn't take the cell phone from the child. And so we're considering that, but it depends on, you know, what's, what law is passed, how, you know, how we get to activate it and as a board, where do you want to go? Do we want a strict no-cellphone policy in any building, which means all adults must abide to, you know?
We hope they're doing that already.
Yeah, so, so we want to be uh consistent in what we do and yeah, that, that was on our radar before the governor uh started raising funds or putting money toward it and we certainly appreciate that and plan to exercise that option uh when it comes, so. Uh, but it may not look like a total ban, we don't know, you know, if it'll look like that. We know other districts have gone in that direction. It's really about the health and safety of children. Can they pay attention when the phones are on?
Right.
You know, and that's what it's about. Can we make sure they're learning when they're here and then that they're protected and safe when they leave, which means they need their device. So we'll, we'll likely always have a space for them to bring them, uh, but not in the classroom when they're learning.
Yeah, that's right.
Unless there's a need for it.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
One of the things I, I could share with you is uh, in my conversations with Speaker Coughlin, that there is some talk um of legislation around cellphone use, um, but none, none coming forth yet, but there's some conversations around that. Many districts, uh Lawrence being one, has implemented policies around cellphone use of students uh in the classroom, uh, so I can address that, that particular issue in that way because I'm in a school district, nearby, neighboring school district that is actually implementing a policy around cellphone use for students. Um, and of course, uh, there's no legislation yet. The talk speaks to that, but there's some talk around, conversations around that work and I'm sure with Larry Trailer and, and of course Ms. Lopez and Mr. Mr. Austin Edwards and Denise Johnson who are involved heavily in Addy and Jeannie uh in the community, uh, Valentina Jackson, our assemblywoman along with Anthony Varelli, in my conversations with them, they are fighting uh at the na- at the state level, of course, fighting nationally against any intrusion on the work that we are doing in the state of New Jersey, in the, particularly Mercer County. So I know in my conversations with at least legislatures and the Speaker of the House and others, and others on this, on this dais and on this board, and our conversations have been strongly against any kind of national mandate on the state of New Jersey or Mercer County, up to the evening county executive, Dan Benson. I mean, we are really working around that issue and making sure that we are strong. Uh, superintendent, of course, been many different meetings, he's been in many different meetings with local law enforcement and others and he's already shared his comments, but uh we are working to, to fight and we're going to continue to fight for our kids and for our families and our community here in Trenton, New Jersey and Mercer County and uh the state, so looking forward to uh, to the fight, continue to fight. All right. Any, any other comments from any other board members?
Yes, I just have a few comments. So I'm, I just want to say how happy I am to be part of the FACE committee. Dr. Ortiz and Denise Kreese are doing such amazing work. Um, and I, I'm looking forward to all of the future activities that Denise has already planned, Ms. Kreese, I'm sorry. And I'm just going to encourage all board members to, if we can make some, uh, uh, have some time in our schedule, arrange time in our schedule so that we can attend a few of these meetings. So Larry, thank you so much for your report, I greatly appreciate that. Um, Howard University students are on their way to volunteer in the district. I'm so excited about them coming and um pouring into our children. I don't know if it's possible, is it possible to like to, to get a summary of their experience here in the district? I don't know if that's possible. I'm not sure if they are um planning to prepare anything written, but if, if that can be shared with the district, that would be nice. I'd like to know how, you know, how they fared when they were uh within our schools.
Volunteer in the district.
Wonderful. Um, I wanted to just make one statement about what's going on nationally um within our, within our country. It, it, it is disheartening to, to see everything that's going on and I just pray that our school districts in New Jersey, that we are standing firm and making sure that our children are receiving everything that they need to be productive citizens regardless of all the negativity that we continue to hear. Uh, you know, almost, it, it feels like it's every day that we, that we're hearing it. So I just encourage this district to stand firm in the face of this wind. Um, that's the only way that we're, we're going to survive. We, we, we cannot fold, uh, because that's what people expect of us, but our children deserve more. So that's all I have.
Okay, so just, just a comment, so certainly I'd like to um salute the Kilmer Choir, they were just phenomenal and certainly that was a lift to the spirits and congratulations to, to our investment in the arts, right? Because the arts are so important and they're things that um engage students and encourage them to learn even more, expand their um, expand their worldview. And so again, um kudos to them and, and certainly to their school in general. And also I'd like to salute the students for actually coming out to express their opinion uh regarding um this whole cash and cashless uh movement. Uh, recently had experience of going through the airport and there are places that don't take cash, right? And so you have to dig for a card, so I can certainly relate to that and um however it is, and I know there are a lot of rules and regulations regarding that, so hopefully there's some way that we can support our students, but again, I know there are specific rules about how you transact business within the schools, so hopefully we can provide some kind of guidance to them as they try to move forward, but I, that whole idea of advocating for what you need, I think that's uh something that we need to applaud. So thank you students for coming out and however it is that we can work with you because I've experienced that, it's like, okay, where's my card and I got cash? You don't want my, you don't want, you don't want my cash, like really? Um, so it's just the opposite, but it's the same thing, right? So yeah, got that, so how about we can support them? So, within the rules.
So with, with your time, did you want to share anything about operations and know that you made one of the, missed some key points, did you want some salient points that you wanted to glean from the operations?
Okay, I, I pulled that up and then I, I dropped it.
We'll wait, we'll wait, we're patient, we'll wait.
Okay, all right. So um, the operations committee um did in fact meet on the, um, on the eighteenth and um, on the eighteenth, the operations committee discussed the um board agenda with the committee. Uh, Ms. Howard informed the committee that there would be a student performance from Kilmer School, which we just experienced. Um, also, uh, we were supposed to have an ethics presentation, I think we mentioned that earlier, but the person, um, Ms. Friedman was not able to be here tonight, so we'll have that at a later time. Um, and also, um, we mentioned that uh upcoming superintendent's uh report out on quarter two, that would come at a later date as well. Um, Mr. Trueheart talked about um the uh policies that would be uh on this particular agenda and the fact that Series Five Thousand and Six Thousand was being reviewed. Um, Mr. Roll, oh, Mr. Roll, our executive agenda, and he's not here tonight, so not sure where we stand exactly with that. Um, we talked about uh the district doing a good job with um transfers compared to other districts in New Jersey. Uh, Ms. Howard reported that um it's always good to have an outside treasurer or C P A who reviews um everything very carefully here as it relates to the district uh finances. Uh, Ms. Howard reviewed the warrant account with the committee. She said that the cash, uh, the excess cash is being invested to earn additional interest income, so our monies are not just sitting there, that they're actually uh earning uh interest. And Mr. Trueheart asked a question about that and so uh Ms. Howard was able to respond that um we're getting interest at a, a rate of six percent um for our funds that are sitting until we actually have to expend them. Um, and so we also talked about if there came a, a situation that involved um our cash flow not coming in, would we be able to survive without that immediate cash flow? And the, the answer was yes for a certain time period, of course, not forever. Um, and also talked about uh staff travel and the um bill lists, the facilities um usage, usage report, the fact that our buildings are being used by communities that's supporting our children and uh, what else? We talked about uh Mercer County Special Services District, we had to make a large payment for them and we wanted to know kind of why that was uh necessary and she explained it. Uh, we didn't agree with it, but she explained it. Um, also, uh, we talked about the donations that are being received for the district for the month of February, the fire and the safety drill, and also um the resolutions for February twenty-twenty-five. Uh, we talked a little bit about um our transportation system. Question was asked, are we considering electric buses? Um, and response, our infrastructure does not necessarily support electric school buses at this particular time. Um, we also talked about the budget process and where we were in the process and the fact is that um we're considering uh reviewing certain proposals that had to kind of be recirculated and let's see whatever else we talked about. And basically that was it. So again, that was the report from the operations committee and that committee did in fact uh meet last week, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Are there any other board comments? Do you want to respond to, oh, Austin? No? Okay, so we're going to move now, move on to discussion, board discussion, the action on consent agenda, uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Properly moved in second, any questions on the motion? Austin?
Oh yeah, I guess it's time. So um, uh, I know it's been discussed earlier, I just want to reiterate myself since I got the giant thing out, right? You know, listen, all right? Um, and it doesn't fall deaf on me, right? The fact that this is uh Black History Month this month, right? And we're able to uh celebrate the fact that uh institutions like Howard University, which have been around for uh essentially since the end of the Civil War, right? Created specifically for African-American and other minority communities to be able to succeed um in this country and around the world. Um, having the Howard students here, right? I know myself, right? As you know, I'm a, I'm a, I'm an alumni along with um a lot of different, there you go, H U, you know, right? Uh, a lot of um great alumni, like notable alumni that have really changed American society and the world, right? and the world, right? Including the late Black Panther, as I call him Chadwick Boseman, Felicia Rashad, who's also a teacher at the university currently, psychologist Kenneth Clark, right, who's instrumental in what would become another alumni's Thurgood Marshall, Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall seminal case of Brown versus Board ending segregation in our country, politicians such as Elijah Cummings, mayor of New York, David Dinkins, our former vice president, soon to be the governor of California, Harris. And I think there's some guy in New Jersey that might have went to Howard that's doing something on the, on the state level, governor, I don't know, that guy, right, you know? Mr. Roz Baraka. A lot of great notable alumni came from there, and knowing that we're able to have our Howard students be a part of the education system here in our district is amazing. I know they're coming in sometime next week to work with some of our alumni in our schools, including the high school, Parker Elementary, and like a lot of other institutions here in the district. And I'm just, I'm just very glad that we're able to move this forward, that we're able to make this happen, that we're building on the legacy that we have of Howard, even in our seven-point-five square miles here. So I'm looking forward to this getting passed this evening, and I'm looking forward to being able to fellowship with my fellow Bison next week here in Trenton. Thank you.
Any additional questions on the motion? Seeing no question, there's no questions on the motion, roll call?
Joe Trueheart?
Yes.
Denise Johnson?
Yes.
Jean Bowie absent. Addy Daniels Lane?
Yes.
Austin Edwards?
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez?
Yes.
Sasa Montanya?
Yes.
Larry Trailer?
Yes.
Jeannie Wiegland?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, any new business to discuss tonight? Anyone have any new business to discuss tonight? Seeing no new business, motion to adjourn? There is no executive session? Probably moved in second, all in favor? We're adjourned. Meeting is adjourned?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Mrs. Grant, Mrs. Grant, and Mrs. Sung, please come to the, to the front. Dr. Conway.